All right, good evening, everyone. Or actually, good afternoon. It's 3:30. We're going to get started here. This is the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. Today is, we are, today is Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, 3:30. We are here in the City Hall Auditorium. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible]
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio-recorded and video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Muck?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vol?
Here.
And Deputy City Manager Belasco. Next, we have Resolution Number 83-03-2023, a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12, discussion of affordable housing proposal by Yacht Harbor Marine LLC, discussion of New Jersey asset and rebate management program, reappointment of the city clerk, and deputy fire chief act contract.
And counsel, I think there's potentially two additional items to add to the closed session agenda, obviously for counsel to vote on, but one of them is Captain John Bobic's contract, which is something that came up after publication of the agenda. That's ready for discussion. And then I think Labor Council would like to give counsel some updates on developments with the Department of Labor.
And if I may, excuse me, Mayor, I asked to put Bobic's on also with, with the deputy fire chief act so that we're not bringing Labor Council back for another closed session so that we can get them all done today. Thank you.
Are we within our, I mean, because we didn't notice for those?
We, we can go into closed session on those because they did come up. They were not anticipated at the time of the publication of the agenda, but, you know, I think they're emergent enough that you might want to consider them in closed session tonight.
Okay.
And Mr. Watson will be on the phone with us in the closed session.
Just want to make sure that we're following all sunshine.
Yes, they waited.
Okay.
The, what do you, it was noticed for?
Yeah, there's no issue in terms of, like I said, it came up after the publication of the agenda.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call? Go ahead.
Yeah, if you don't mind. I do have a question on the, the one that we're going to go into closed session about, and it's, I think it's number, because there's only so many things that would, I think there are nine matters that we can actually go into closed session on.
Right.
And, I don't know, I keep reading this, and I keep thinking, if we go into closed session over the, the, the public funds, I'm concerned that how this is worded in here, and it clearly states that we can go into closed session for it, which is not a problem. Any matter involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds, the setting of banking rates, or investment of public funds, and this is where I have a problem with it. It says where it could adversely affect the public interest if discussion of such matters were disclosed. And I guess, I like to be transparent, I just, could I have a, I guess, the reason why we're doing this and going into closed session, because I don't know if it adversely affects the public, so.
Well, I, I had asked for it in closed session because the first proposal that came forth, you know, looked like it was going to take a large portion of our portfolio and moving it into a totally new fund, not one that we had experienced or any exposure to prior. There has been an update this afternoon, which actually puts us back with our current depository at a more favorable rate. So I'm not necessarily, you know, opposed to keeping it in closed session. The original request from me was that we were making a decision on a large portion of the portfolio with a, a new depository, and wanted to make sure that we were very clear on the parameters from a financial standpoint and any risk associated with it before we would have it for public discussion. Now that we've come back to remaining with our current depository and having a better rate and more favorable at the end of the day to the city and to the taxpayers, I'm okay with it coming into open session. If that's, if that's, Mr. Gillen.
It's, it's up to counsel. This is, the, the presumption is disclosure. These are exemptions so that you can, you know, enter into closed session and talk about these things if they might be advantageous to the city's bargaining position in a negotiation regarding rates. So that, from my perspective, I was looking at this in terms of the city evaluating its options and not wanting to show its cards, which I think that's what the exemption's built for. But that's a policy decision for counsel to make as, as a unit.
And just so you know, I mean, I still think that there's a potential for the New Jersey arm option. I want somebody to explain to me.
Right.
We've got $4 million we have to worry about. If it can't be handled with sturdy.
Right.
Do we have to go into the New Jersey arm? So it's a similar discussion, it's just not.
Mayor, if I may, did everyone get the latest email?
Yes.
That I sent out from, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I would agree, and let me just step back for a second on the, on total. I think we've taken a policy of having as little closed sessions as possible, and we really haven't had a lot of closed sessions. Almost all of them, I think, have been basically contracts or other legal issues. This one is not a legal issue, but I think what was just stated well from our council member McDade and the solicitors, looking at these things and not showing our cards on all of them is important. Looking at, and let's just be clear, this is talking about interest rates on our investments. Historically, the city over the last few years has gotten very little interest on our, on our investment, on, actually, not on investments. So we've had very low interest rates, knowing that interest rates have gone up to around 4%. We wanted to discuss this and those types of, what options are available, which I, I have to say, I think is important, obviously, for the city. I do think it's important that we can talk about this among counsel. But I would be completely fine, I think we could make very descriptive minutes and report anything that, any conclusions, of course, that come from that closed session. Again, anything that, the only thing we would be discussing is those investments, any potential risks that, that could come up, which of course we have to speak about for taxpayers' funds. But I, I think that's okay personally.
I agree.
Yeah, the only concern that I have is the public is not privy to that until after it's voted on here at an open table. So they won't see the discussions in a min, in a minutes.
Could we not do a presentation that lays out all of the options that we would be looking at? The fact that we are currently, what sturdy currently pays, what we would have as an option with the arm, and then also what sturdy has come back with, and then make a, and then whatever our discussion and decision is, we could lay all of that out in, in public session and say, this is how we came to the conclusion that this was in the best interest, and codify it through a resolution.
I think we, it's our job to, it's our job to explain to the public why we're taking the steps that we're doing. So negotiations that could potentially be detrimental to, to the taxpayers, I think absolutely should be discussed in closed session.
That's, and that's why it's there. You know, contract negotiations, rates on investments, you know, that's clearly something that there's an exemption for if you want to talk about it. That's advantageous to the taxpayers to talk about it in, in private, but eventually that's going to become public, and then if you, if you decide as a unit that you want to explain what you did right after it, and not wait for the special meeting minutes to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And that's, that's, I'm.
Yeah, I would agree with Deputy Mayor.
Let's do that. Is that okay?
Yeah, can we? In the interest of transparency, yes, I would want to explain whatever decisions were made, what, you know, what we discussed, and how we came to those conclusions, and the steps that we went through to get there.
Um, would you, could we do that through resolution this evening if we make a decision? Or?
Or, I mean, you could have a verbal discussion reflecting, you know, what conclusions you came up with, and that could be reflected in the minutes as well.
Well, it's not time-sensitive, is it?
No.
I don't think so.
We could, we could take a step, discuss.
And just discuss and bring it back.
Yes, and have a resolution ready for the next meeting, you know, and prepare.
With, with full explanation.
Exactly.
As far as, okay.
Okay. Good?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Mayor, should I add the additional discussions to the agenda, or at least to this resolution?
The, the items that I mentioned earlier? Councilman Meyer?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to add those items in the discussion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to amend to, to add?
Captain Bobic's contract and update on Department of Labor issues with Labor Council.
Roll call?
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Muck?
Yes. Do I have a motion on the amended resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Muck?
Yes. Okay. Time is? Time is 3:44, and we're going into closed session. Should be back by about 5:00. Thank you.
All right, good evening. We are coming out of closed session and we need to, to close the closed session. Do I have a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Um, I don't think we need a roll call for that one.
Oh, we're closed. Cool. Okay.
It was that easy.
Give us a minute for our solicitor and city manager before we open the regular meeting.
You want to get back through that?
Yeah. He wasn't happy about it, but he does in some response. What's that?
Sorry for the delay, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start our special, oops, let me get the right page here. We're going to start our work session meeting. This is a work session meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. The time is now 5:17. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malick?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vol?
Here.
And Deputy City Manager Velasco?
Here.
And we do have a couple additions to the agenda tonight, Mayor, if you'd like to start with those.
Yes, please.
First, we have Resolution 93-03-2023, a resolution for the reappointment of Cape May City Clerk and Registrar of Vital Statistics.
Should we do all these in one motion? Is that okay?
Yeah, and then I thought we would do 93 first to swear.
Okay.
All right, next we also have 94-03-2023, a resolution approving employment agreement between the City of Cape May and Deputy Fire Chief Michael Eck, and 95-03-2023, a resolution approving employment agreement between the City of Cape May and Captain John Bobic.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And then, Mayor, if we just want to go out of order and do 93-03-2023, again, that's the resolution for the reappointment of Cape May City Clerk and Registrar of Vital Statistics.
Somebody have a hot date or something?
Maybe a newborn baby, who knows?
A babysitter. Do I have a motion on Resolution 93?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Easy decision.
Easy decision. And I think, I speak for everyone. Everyone always speaks so highly of you, Erin. Eddie, all the work that you do for the city that many people don't know, but it's really wonderful, your family, and we are just so happy to have you here in the City of Cape May, so thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
And Mayor Malick?
Yes. Congratulations and thank you.
Welcome back.
And if you do need to get back to a babysitter, feel free to.
Swearing.
Do we do swearing in then? Well, okay, let's do, let's do the swearing in as we speak.
I, Erin Z. Burke. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the State of New Jersey. And the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States. And to the governments established in the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly. Perform all the duties of Cape May City Municipal Clerk. Perform all the duties of Cape May City Municipal Clerk. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment. And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment. Nor to seek personal gain. Nor to seek personal gain. Favor or advantage not available to the general public. Favor or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God. Thank you, dear.
So help me God. Thank you, dear. I do just wanna say thank you. I really, I truly do appreciate the unanimous support. It means a lot from council, from management. My lady is in the office, Terry, Ash and I and Emily holding it down, and be back May 1st, ready to hit the ground running. And of course, thank you, Eddie and the boys at home and my family for their support. It means a lot, guys. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. I'm leaving.
Thank you, Erin. Well deserved. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a city, city manager update?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen here tonight. As you've seen around town, some of the 15 mile an hour and 20 mile an hour signs are being installed throughout the city. It's part of our program to slow things down. Councilman Jaeger and Councilwoman McDade are working on a public safety brochure. We met with them to deal with the bikes, the traditional bikes, pedestrians, golf carts operation, electric bikes, electric skateboards, just general safety conflict we have with all these changes in the city, and we don't want anyone to get hurt. So they're working on a brochure and that. We're even looking into maybe with the chief of police to have a couple summer officers just dedicate it on the public safety of those entities, all those electric skateboards and all. As many of you may know, I mean, the council members have noticed the mayor and Lou and I and the officers, that some people just don't understand the regulations. They don't realize that, you know, if you have a golf cart, you can't have a child operating it. You can't operate it under the influence of anything. You can't let a child play with the steering wheel. You can't have children on the golf carts that aren't strapped in. It's a major concern, and we're concerned about it in the city, and the two council members are working on that, that issue. Lou and the assessor's office are gonna be sending out a new welcome letter that's been put together by Councilwoman McDade. So for any, all new residents, they'll get the welcome letter explaining everything that goes on in the city, who to contact if you're having issues, and it's really well put together. Road projects that the county are doing, Pittsburgh, Lafayette are currently, have currently started, the reconstruction of the streets. Beach Drive is gonna be put off till the first week of September because there was an issue with the, awarding the bid with the New Jersey DOT. The public address system along Beach Drive that will be able to put a public address throughout the summer is being installed. There was a little delay with some of the materials. We're gonna have automatic announcements throughout the summer about the safety, about things you can do and you can't do, and even hook up with the Kiwanis when we do the National Anthem, so people pay attention throughout that whole promenade. We'll play the National Anthem, and hopefully people will respect that as we do. The arches on the promenade are being installed, and once they're done, it's gonna look awesome with all the lighting. I wanna congratulate the ICE Ball Committee, Curtis Bashall, on raising funds for more arches and the bike racks that'll be replaced on the Washington Street Mall. It's not being used by taxpayers' money. This, this money's all been raised, and I wanna commend everybody that was involved with that. Solar panels are being installed down at Public Works at every roof that we have, and that's gonna be dedicated to the electric bill of the D-Sale plant that we currently have and in the future. Code enforcement's been brought up in the past. I plan on hiring a summer code enforcement person to work with our code enforcement officers, so that everybody's in compliance, to have them work along with them, not to penalize them, but try to bring people into compliance this summer. Councilman Jaeger and my staff had a presentation from Enterprise, a leasing program, because in this budget, we have replacement of some Public Works vehicles. We have replacement of police cars that we've replaced. But Enterprise has a, excuse me, has a program, and the due diligence has been done by the County of Cape May, with the prosecutor's office staff, the sheriff's department vehicles, North Wildwood, I guess the Crest is getting into it, the county. They've already been involved with this program of the vehicles. We plan on having a public presentation at the next council meeting for the public and the full council to hear this presentation, and then we can move forward, if they decide, if you guys decide. The Deputy Mayor Baldwin, she's been addressing the new bathrooms, which I guess will be talked about tonight, next, on the promenade next to Convention Hall. I know you've had an architect involved. You've been working diligently with that, that project to move it along. The mayor would like to do a dune day around Earth, Earth Day, with volunteers doing plantings on the dunes. However, as we know, we don't wanna touch things without checking on the DEP, which we're doing that and waiting to get a blessing because we don't wanna get ourselves in trouble. We're having problems, council, with the phone system, and we're gonna have to replace that. We've had the phone systems go down several times here in City Hall in the different buildings, and we're looking into getting proposals for a new system. The last two weeks, we had sadly enough vandalism at the Ocean Avenue Beach, excuse me, restroom here, over here on Ocean Avenue. The police are looking into that. It was two different incidents, two weeks in a row, and the person responsible, we hopefully can identify him, and he'll be charged. Our target is to present the budget, hopefully at the next council meeting. We're working on putting all the books together for the council members, and then we plan on going through each of the books with council members prior to the introduction, so that we get a lot of questions out of the way and talk about capital projects also. That's it, Mayor.
Quick one. I know they do, I've been actively doing that I-N-I study. I know far short of any reports, but have you been updated on that yet, just other than the fact that they're out there?
Lou can touch. He's been working with the engineer on that. Lou?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't gotten any of the grading. That won't, that'll come forth as the project is completed. But they've been alerting us as to areas that needed heavy cleaning and any really particular problem spots, which so far has just been one brought to our attention.
Obviously, we had that funded actually through some of the returns from the county, but it should be really important, the infiltration and what's the other I? Inflow. Inflow, thank you. Infiltration and inflow study. So if you see people, they'll open manhole covers and are putting cameras and are really looking at all the pipes. City is known for years now that we have frankly more water going to the treatment plant than we actually produce, which doesn't make sense, so we try to, and anything that goes through the treatment plant, of course, we pay for. So trying to figure out where there may be leaks. Every system has leaks, but just trying to find out where we can make the biggest differences.
I've seen them down at the, on the east end of the island.
Oh, good, okay. So that's what they're doing when you see, when you see them out on the street. Okay, city solicitor?
I don't have any updates, but I do have some new business later in the meeting.
Okay. Ordinances for introduction?
Yes, we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption, 487-2022, and ordinance to update the Uniform Salary and Classification Plan for the Department of Personnel Positions in the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
We do have a public hearing on this.
Public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on 487, please come to the microphone.
Hi, Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. In reference to this one, I don't see the OEM underneath stipend. I think he was always given a stipend. I think it might have been an overlook. The deputy OEM is listed in his stipends, but not the regular OEM.
It, it's on the first page. Municipal Emergency Management Coordinator, part-time, minimum wage to $6,000. It's paid as a stipend, but it's here in the salary ordinance.
It's just a different title than?
It was actually in two places.
Okay.
And we've corrected that to have it in just one place.
Okay, so it's still a stipend?
Yes.
And we, it went, it said 6,000 now? I think we used to, we used to give them 3,000.
No.
It's a range.
Well, it's a range. That's the max.
Okay, well, just.
Not necessarily what he, what the individual would get in that role. It's just the maximum of what.
Well, when it was a stipend, there wasn't a range. It was a fixed amount.
Okay.
It is a, and that salary is covered through a grant that we received from.
County OEM.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else from the public before we close that public comment? Seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with the city managers about this ordinance, and they explained to me that just because these positions exist doesn't mean that they're, that they're gonna exist or be part of the budget. For it to exist, city council has to approve them as part of the budget, so if there's any confusion about these positions. If anybody else has to say any more than that.
You covered it. Thank you, councilman.
Great. Any other questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have 491-2023, an ordinance confirming duration of metered parking areas and inclusion of additional parking added to the Welcome Center in the City of Cape May.
Do I, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Solicitor, I know you spoke with Eric Brzezinski, the superintendent of DPW. Could you give us a quick update on that?
Sure. So this is up for second reading tonight for adoption. And I had a chance to speak with our Department of Public Works supervisor, and he indicated and recommended a potential change to this to include the Welcome Center parking within the mall framework, which goes from April 1st to December 31st. So that was a recommendation from DPW to, to just include that area among the, the extended mall areas.
And I think one of the reasons was they look at the Welcome Center, as I think most of us really do, but as one location. There's the stone location, and then there's the new parking lot that we, but that could become very confusing for everyone to have different dates. So it's not a change in rate, it's just a change in date. They want it to be uniform. That made a lot of sense to me. However, I, I think the understanding is that's a significant change to the ordinance and.
That will have to be republished, but we can do it on the shortened timeframe for an amendment after first reading. So essentially, I prepared an amendment that would incorporate the Welcome Center as part of that extended season. I think I provided that to the city clerk, and council could potentially entertain a motion to adopt that amendment, and then we would republish, and then I think by our next meeting, we could have this on for second reading.
Okay, and one of the reasons is I think April 1st is the.
It would be right immediately after our next meeting.
Okay, so could you give us the language of the proposed amendment then?
So there's a list of, it basically says the parking season, and then except that these specified areas are gonna go until December 31st. So you would add a street or an area, and it would just say the Welcome Center, side, both, and then include the block and lot information for, for both areas, the stone area and the new angled parking. And that, that information is already provided in the, the Section 745.7 Amendment. So all that information would just essentially mirror each other in both, so that you would include the Welcome Center as part of that extended season.
Does someone wanna make that in the form of a motion?
I'll do that. I make that motion.
Amendment.
To amend.
Motion to amend. Do I have a second on the motion to amend?
I'll second.
Before I call for roll call, does everyone understand what we're doing? That, for the public too. The new parking lot next to the Welcome Center, where it has the angled parking, would be on the same timeframe now as the stone parking closer to.
Where the buses pull out.
El Myra, right, right, El Myra Street.
All of the parking in, at the Welcome Center, and I wanted to explain it that way rather than going, look at this table, and it's gonna be confusing to anybody listening. Just wanna include the entire Welcome Center with the extended season. That would be the end result of that amendment, so that language is with, with the city clerk right now, if council would like to.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend and a second. Any other questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And then we would just need a motion to reintroduce as amended.
Do I have a motion to reintroduce as amended?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. We, I'll just go out of order for a second. We did have a public hearing on that, considering it was second reading. There will be another second reading on that same issue, but if anyone was here to comment on that ordinance, we'd be happy to take that at this time. I'll just say again, it will, will be becoming for council at a, at a later date. No one? Okay. We can move on to public, public portion on resolutions only. Anyone wish, here to speak tonight on resolutions this evening? Can open it up for public comment?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. My question has to do with Resolution 84-03-2023. It's the appointment of a member to the City Zoning Board of Adjustment. My question is, is there a reason why it wasn't advertised for two weeks on the city website?
I believe it was a time-sensitive request because there's many vacancies on the upcoming meeting, so we just got letters of interest and council made their recommendation. It was time-sensitive to be adopted at this meeting, to have a quorum for the upcoming planning and zoning board.
Well, I'm actually on the zoning board, and I was never even called to see if I was gonna be attending, so I'm not sure where it came from that certain people weren't gonna, that they didn't have enough for a quorum. And also, it was known.
Secretary Stacy, Karen knew that there were several people.
She did say that, but that was only the people that came to her. It wasn't like she went out and asked if, you know, people were gonna be there or not.
Sure. I, I think she was concerned about the, in the interest of making sure any applicants who were, you know, wanted to have their applications heard this, this month. And so there was time sensitivity, but the zoning board had had applications, have been posted previously, so pretty much it was asked most recently, I think, including yourself.
Right, I'm just, I'm just meaning, we did pass a resolution to make sure that board openings were gonna be put on the city website for two weeks. And with the fact that it was Diane, she knew, I think before February, that she was gonna be leaving the end of February, so it could have been posted at that time. I just wanna make sure we, we are due our due diligence to post openings, so people are aware that they are there. And also, I guess I'm just going to ask about, is this person, a new person, gonna be coming in as an alternate too?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then my second question has to do with Resolution 90-03-2023 concerning the bids for Kiwanis Park. It's being rebid. My question is, is there any new changes going into that rebid?
There are some for the open space compliance.
Yes, we, we are putting in an application to the County Open Space Board, and in doing so, they have specific requirements that if they're going to provide funding, and they, they pay for it, they cover it, but they were not in our original bid.
Okay, so the, I guess, somebody had mentioned to me that the bathroom's gonna be heated there at the Kiwanis Park. Is that true?
I think so.
Okay, is there?
I mean, I can review the plans and see for certain, but I believe it is.
Okay, I just didn't know why we'd be heating a bathroom, you know, in that location. And then my next question is 91-03 concerning the advertising for bids for the interior renovations for Beach Avenue bathrooms. I guess we're doing a bid. Are we ever gonna do a resolution for this project?
This would essentially be that.
So a bid's now considered a resolution?
Well, if council didn't wanna pursue the project, they wouldn't authorize the bid, right?
Well, I mean, but in the bid, you're not saying where the money's gonna be coming from. In a resolution, you usually say where you're gonna be coming, the money's gonna be coming from for the project.
And then when it comes up for review, when the bids are opened, and then there's a CFO certification for where the money's coming from, and they can decide to reject all or accept and say where the money's gonna go.
I, I just think, you know, for planning purposes, it would be good to have a resolution so you know where the money's coming from before the project is done, or even started.
Well, they haven't, they're not gonna award it yet. That's the thing. They're putting out the bid. It may come back too high, and then you don't pursue the project.
Right.
This is just council saying, hey, we'd like to explore this project. Let's get some bids and see if we wanna do it or not.
Is this in lieu of the current, I guess, I wanna say for lack of a better word, there's sort of a trailer area up there that's sitting up on, on the promenade, so the, the idea would be that we would be potentially removing that prom, that, that trailer that people have commented on for a long time, and that this facility would be housed inside of a building, et cetera. So I'm, I'm sure that there's probably some cost associated with that trailer facility.
I think too, one of it was that there are peers and.
I think, too, one of it was that there are piers, and I'm not the authority on this, but just looking at the plans, it looked like there was some auxiliary space to do this. And then, including the bathrooms in that building, Steve still leaves plenty of space for other uses in the back area, too.
Right.
It seemed like underutilized in that sense.
And this would then also obviate the need for people to go into Convention Hall and use those bathrooms, because this would be something that would be more available and probably maybe even open longer during the year, which people complain about, because there's not someplace. Okay. So that's how... That was my perception of all of this.
And I'm hoping that this bathroom would actually be heated?
Yes. It is. Okay. Any other public comment on resolutions only at this time? Seeing none? And just real quick, the zoning board member is Tom Cataldo, and I just want to... Well, we have to vote on him, but I want to assume for a second to welcome him. He was a former member of the Historic Preservation Commission and a really, really nice person in town, so I'm happy that he was willing to serve. Onto our consent agenda?
Can I ask one quick question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Talking about Tom Cataldo, there are two term expiration resolutions that we have in front of us. One is 2024, and the other one's 2023. Which one are we... Is the one is 2024, which would be the alternate two member? Thank you. The first one was filling Diane's, but instead we moved the other members. Thank you. You're welcome.
Actually, I do want to just say one more thing. I want to first say thank you, and she couldn't be here this evening, but Diane Hutchinson, who is resigning from the zoning board, who has done just such a fabulous job on that board for many, many years as the chairwoman. And this... Tom is trying to fill her shoes, I guess, a little bit. But Diane just did such a wonderful job for the zoning board. But separate from that, because I do want to keep it separate, she did repose City Council in January, saying that she was going to sell her house, but she wanted to stay on the board in case the house didn't sell. And we said, "Diane, you do a wonderful job. We keep you as long as we possibly can." So that was a little bit of that notification issue, just to put... Let everyone know that.
Talk about Tom with his previous service?
And Tom was on the Historic Preservation Commission. And only resigned then, because he had to leave town for family issues. But we're just so happy to have him back. And I worked with Tom on HPC myself as a member, and he did such a nice job. So thank you. Onto resolutions?
Yes. Is there anything Council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Good?
We can, just a moment.
Oh, no? Okay. Okay. All good? Okay.
And do you want to put the two that we added on the consent agenda, or keep those on the regular agenda? The two contracts?
To consent, is that okay? Everyone okay with that? Consent agenda for the two contracts? That's fine.
Okay. We have Resolution 84-03-2023, Resolution Appointing Member to the Cape May City Zoning Board of Adjustment. 85-03-2023, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Environmental Commission. 86-03-2023, Resolution Authorizing Contract for Professional Booking and Production Services for Cape May Convention Hall Summer Concert Series for the year 2023 with Spyboy Productions. 87-03-2023, Resolution Authorizing Placement of City Seal and Insignia in Connection with Washington Street Mall Brick Program and to Recognize Public Service. 88-03-2023, Resolution Authorizing Grant Application and Execution of a Grant Agreement with the County of Cape May for American Rescue Plan Act Infrastructure Funding. 89-03-2023, Resolution Authorizing Request for Extension of Municipal Local Aid Agreement to New Jersey Department of Transportation for Reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue Phase 5. 90-03-2023, Resolution Authorizing Readvertisement for Bids for Quanis Community Park ADA Compliance Project. 91-03-2023, Resolution Authorizing Advertisement for Bids for Interior Renovations for 702 Beach Avenue. 92-03-2023, Resolution for the Payment of Bills. 94-03-2023, Resolution Approving Employment Agreement between the City of Cape May and Deputy Fire Chief Michael Eck. And 95-03-2023, Resolution Approving Employment Agreement between the City of Cape May and John Bobic.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Actually, sorry. Well, just one quick comment on this. Again, I just want to say thank you to Tom Cataldo for your service. Angela Judge on the Environmental Commission, thank you for your service. And I want to say thank you to Captain Bobic and Deputy Chief Eck for got this contract on, and you do such a wonderful service to the city, so we thank you very much. Roll call?
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
I think we're on to old business.
Old business? Sorry. Any old business, Council? No? New business, City Solicitor?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to bring up a new business discussion, just about occasionally in municipality, you get these housekeeping zoning code. Potential areas to improve the zoning code, to clarify the zoning code. And that usually comes between me going back and forth with the zoning officer, get questions, and, you know, he has questions about interpreting the code. So I... In speaking with both Councilman Meyer and Councilman Jaeger, I put together a... Two potential amendments, and wanted to just go over with Council the outline of that. And one of them is the distances between accessory structures and right-ofways. And we have a code provision that actually provides five feet from a lot line. In the case of a right-ofway, you know, a street or an alley, that's going to be 10 feet. There's areas where you may have public property. It may not be a street, but still may justify having a more increased setback, because public property can change the use of that. As Council can see, you know, public property can be converted to various types of different uses, where maybe a single-family home wouldn't present that kind of concern. So to preserve light air and open space, preserve setbacks, preserve the ability for appropriate development to happen in those areas, and to leave the city with options, I think it makes a lot of sense to include a 10-foot setback for not just streets and alleys, but any public property, because of the nature of that use. So that's one area where Council may consider making an amendment. And then the other is a more of a housekeeping item in terms of house raising. We've seen some house raising because of Hurricane Sandy. A lot of communities have seen that. And the question becomes, when you pick up a house and move it around on a lot, do you have to go to the board to get some sort of approval? And the answer to that is, yes, in appropriate circumstances, where maybe you're expanding or creating new types of variance relief. But what about an owner that is altering the site, altering the structure? But what they end up with, the end product, is something that fully conforms with all the bulk setbacks, you know, FAR, side, rear yard, building coverage. If the end product of what they're moving around, notwithstanding what we started with, if that end product is something that fully conforms with the code today, do we want to make them go for a development application? And in discussing that with the zoning officer, I think the common sense answer to that should be yes. If we're having somebody trying to bring a lot or development into compliance, I think we want to encourage that at the zoning officer stage. But it's not exactly clear in the code as written, and that's because of the nature of our nonconforming use laundry list of ways to address that in the code. But I think this is an opportunity to maybe clarify that, that that might be something that you want to just make clear, that notwithstanding the fact that you may be changing it, raising a building, if the end product is a... If something that just fully conforms with the bulk requirements, and looking at that as if you're just building from scratch, why wouldn't you just say that the zoning officer, provided they're assured that information is confirmed, then that that can be, you know, would avoid having to go before the board process? Because in the follow-up question, that is, what are you going to the board for? What are they approving if you fully conform? So it's just kind of connecting the dots between that. What makes a lot of sense when you talk it out, but it's not necessarily clearly reflected in the code. And anytime you can give... Take the policy of what you want to do as a town and communicate that in clear language to the zoning officer, just going to make for better government. So...
So, Chris, one of the questions I have on that, is a site survey required after those types of changes are made? So say that, you know, it's going to conform to whatever the, you know, the lot size is and the FAR, but is that confirmed through another required site survey after that property is raised?
And I'll just speak from my own personal experience. I mean, you have to do definitely, you know, existing conditions, and then an as-built survey to close out your permit. So I think my understanding is that's routine in the city, and the zoning officers require...
Can we just confirm that?
Sure.
That... Because I would want to make sure that there's some checks and balances on that, that, you know, if we're going to allow this to reside with the zoning office.
And that's something we can clearly indicate in the code, too, to the extent it's not there.
Thanks.
Do you want me to... I mean, Mr. Jaeger's on the planning board. Council, do you want him to work with the Solicitor to present something?
Yeah, because your first scenario, I'm sure you could give me an example, which I don't need here right now. But yes, would like to, you know, just, Councilman Jaeger, work with you, and then come back and give us what the recommendation would be.
Sounds right. Good.
I'd like to add to what he was talking about with the first example, but I'm sure we're going to get some questions from the audience, so our Solicitor can kind of elaborate the history of a certain area in Cape May, if that's all right.
City Manager, any new business?
No, sir.
City Clerk? Deputy City Clerk? No? Councilwoman... Council... Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
The only one thing I want to bring up, we did have a resolution on about the Washington Street Mall brick project. You can go onto their website. They're doing a brick dedication project. It's a really nice way to, you know, look at, you know, putting your name on there, being part of the Washington Street Mall for a very small fee. That's all.
Very small. All right.
Very small fee.
Councilwoman McDade?
Yeah, just following up on that, I do want to take a moment to recognize Bee Pasagno is who's here. This was in honor of her father, who gave a great deal of time and energy to the city, and she continues in his legacy. So I would like to recognize her and the work that she does on HPC and the bid, and just, you know, a citizen for all of Cape May. Thank you, Bee.
Thank you, Bee.
Can I just... I'm sorry.
Maureen is referencing... Only Bee would actually ask to do this, I think, but she asked that we give permission through resolution to use the city seal for her father's brick, which I thought was really lovely, so... Did anyone vote no to that? No? 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 But Bee, it's wonderful, and thank you. It's really, really beautiful. Please, please.
It just occurred to me, and some of you have heard this story, that 58 years ago this March, my father sat there, and I sat right up there, and tried, watched him try to sell the mall, the idea of the mall, to the people of Cape May. And nobody wanted it. Nobody. And he decided to go through with it. It took a lot of determination. It took courage. It took vision. And he, and a small group, you might call them a band of brothers, persevered. And of course, we know what we have today. It absolutely turned around the economy of the town. That, in combination with the preservationists, we had a new town. We had a new brand. And, you know, people may think I'm crazy for working in all these elections, which I really love, but it is to protect our brand. It is to protect our city. And I cannot thank this Council enough, because you are all doing just that. As we like to say, you are keeping Cape May, Cape May. And I thank you for this kindness in my father's name. He would have been gratified. Thanks.
Thank you, Bee.
Yeah, just two other matters. One, I know that this was published today in a press release. Stacy Sheen has taken the lead on the blessing of the water ceremony, which will be April 1st at the Fisherman's Memorial. So we'll be wanting to get the word out to everyone for that at 11 o'clock. Thank you to City Manager Vole and Deputy Manager Lou Belasco for working with Mike Jaeger and I. We're putting together sort of a low-speed vehicle safety pamphlet, Manager Vole mentioned. And this is something that we're going to be sending out to everyone who holds a mercantile license. And it's really to make visitors aware of what our speed restrictions are throughout the city, and the safety guidelines in using a low-speed vehicle in the city. We'll be presenting this to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, and then using it as sort of an adjunct for their broader project on just various vehicle uses throughout the city. And then finally, to Deputy Manager Belasco, he's worked with Mary Parsons Snyder and I on the development of the Welcome to New Property Owners letter, and that'll be sent out every week to everyone... Nine went out. Yay, Lou. Yeah, and it really just covers all of our advisory committees, our the council members, where to contract for construction and zoning, how we recycle here. So it's just informational. It's about two pages. But I thought a good way for us to start, to engage new property owners, so that they understand the city infrastructure, whether they're a full-time or a part-time resident. So thanks very much.
It's really nice, and thank you for tackling that.
Yeah.
Getting everything out there is... We've been talking about it for some time, so to get that done, really. Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Councilman Meyer?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. It was part of my attention at the last council meeting, and it was something we used to do a couple of years back. And this is having town hall meetings, you know? Some people don't enjoy coming here at the council meetings, because we strictly talk about business. But there's so much going on in town, so much positivity, and there's probably so many people out there that want the opportunity to ask questions, you know, of things that they may have missed in newspaper and things like that. I think it's a great opportunity for the city to promote itself and know things that we're doing, especially many of which are being done with grant money. You know, that's something to be very proud of. And it goes along with, you know... It's all related to public safety, you know, tourism, you know, our history, and, you know, keeping Cape May, Cape May. I think it's an opportunity for, you know, everybody to get out there and just have a feel-good meeting, you know, and just listen to our people. And some of those who may not live here year-round, give them an opportunity, maybe on a Saturday, while they're here, to say, you know, "Let's go check this thing out and get some information and ask questions." So I think that would be an opportunity. Thank you for bringing that up in the near future before summer starts. And I think it would be positive. Is there any update on the Welcome Center fence? Yet?
We did get a design that we're looking at, the black wrought iron, I guess, from Vince. So we're looking into that.
Prices are... We're waiting for prices.
Right.
Okay. Also, when it comes to the Welcome Center, I've met with, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and the Revolution Railroad people. There's some work that we can do over there. A little bit of power washing, maybe some painting of the cement over there, as well as replacing some of the wood on the benches. You know, I think it'd be important to, you know, bring this up, because we're doing the rest of the areas, and we have our engineer redesigning some beautification for the area. I think that's just the one part that we need to get, you know, get done ourselves within the city. And I'm sure it's a really easy project for us to do.
I did pass that on, since you and I had the conversation about it, to Public Works, to power wash and clean it up where we can.
Yes. And I think it might be an opportunity for us to possibly put a security camera for the city over there. You know, just give us an idea of what's going on over there, and not necessarily have to have a police officer over there, you know? And it could protect ourselves from vandalism and other types of things that are going on.
We're currently expanding security cameras, and we're looking in that with Vector right now.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another thing, when I went to the Kimikani League of Municipalities meeting this last month, we had a really great speaker. He was a chief from Northern New Jersey, a chief of police, and he works for the JIF. And he was talking about this new phenomenon that's happening all across the country, which is called First Amendment audits. And it's a situation that's putting city employees in a precarious situation. And I think it's a great opportunity. And I spoke with Mike Vole about having this individual here to speak to some of the employees, and it maybe would be great for some council members to see his presentation. Because there are things that we have to do as a municipality through ordinances to ensure that... through ordinances to ensure that if the sign on a door of an office says authorized personnel only, it's not worth the words, it's not worth the plaque, you know, the plate that it's written on, because there's no ordinance stopping someone from going over there. So there's people that are, that are causing some, you know, municipal employees all across the country some headache, and it'd be a great opportunity for us to learn how to deal with these situations and protect ourselves from these situations.
Councilman, thank you. I've been in contact with that gentleman, I'm waiting to hear back from him, and he will come down and do a presentation.
Yes, I appreciate that very much. We just, we're talking about raising parking meters, or at least extending the season in some of the areas, and it's important to have this program, you know, parking meters, keep our taxes down, which is a wonderful thing, $2 million a year. I think, and that mostly benefits the taxpayers in Cape May, but, you know, the people that pay these fees, you know, could be considered a tax, whatever you want to call it, these are tourists, so I feel that there's definitely a need to give back something. So I've been talking with the city managers about bringing back the transportation system that we had in the past, maybe truncate it in a certain way, they have a plan that would probably cut the budget for that in half and still provide some of the services that, you know, we need to help keep congestion down in the center of our town. And I've heard tourists and hotels asking me about this as well, so this is something that, it's on tourists' minds, you know. And lately, we have a lot of great programs being paid for by the counties, such as the road improvements, but, you know, being a Shade Tree liaison, members of the Shade Tree are not very happy that we don't have even an opportunity to voice our opinion about trees being taken down, especially street trees around our certain roadways. Currently, the three trees that were in front of what I call the octopus mini golf place have been taken down, you know, you can see cones on top of their trunks right now, and then some of the trees across from Regan's are going to be taken down. I just would like to have the opportunity to say to the county, hey, listen, we are a unique city in this county, we're one of the few that are a Shade Tree municipality for over 40 years, can we have the opportunity to save the trees that are out there? I'm just putting it out there. And also, just to remind people, I think it's a great, great event, the polar bear plunge and run is going to happen again around St. Patrick's Day with Carney's, I think it goes to a charity, and I think it's a great opportunity to have, you know, some fun in Cape May. And the water's not as cold as you think it is. All right, I'm done, thank you, everybody. Oh, and the last.
He's not done.
And the last thing is, you know, I'm very sympathetic to some of our citizens in town and their situations about, you know, we'll talk about it in a little bit, about Cape Hart Lane, you know, Michael Jaeger and I and the city managers and the city solicitor, we've been talking about this a lot for the last two weeks. So even if we don't get everything done at 100% of what the neighbors want, we're doing our best to do what we can within our legal limits, so.
And if I may, Councilman, you brought up transportation system that I'll be sharing with the council real soon for the summer.
Perfect, okay. I guess, Mr. Jaeger, Councilman Jaeger?
So I just, I wanted to start out, I need to recognize and thank Evelyn Lovitz. Evelyn is a member, was a member of the Environmental Commission, she had been a member for many years and was very productive, and, you know, the members felt very strongly about her contributions to all their accomplishments, that she's going to be sorely missed. Evelyn's decided it's time to retire, and, and we, we just want to thank her and appreciate all of her service. And also, having to do with the Environmental Commission, unfortunately, we've talked about this in the past, and it's not going to be a happy subject for everybody sitting up here, but, you know, since the passing of the Invasive Species Act, part of that, as we all know, the responsibility, the law requires that people who have invasive species on their property that are invading their neighbor's property need to get that under control, they need to get it off their property. Unfortunately, the city of Cape May is one of the neighbors that has invasive species going on to other properties. And all I'm suggesting is, at this point in time, we're in the process of developing the budget, I should have asked or mentioned it sooner, but I'm hoping that if we haven't included some D P W funds for at least starting to address Cape May's properties with these species on it, that we can include it in the budget and get it done.
Well noted.
So.
Start at home.
Start at home, yes, but, yes, exactly. We need to, we need to show the public that we stand to by the laws that were passing, so, but that's all I had.
Great, okay. And you'll work with the city manager officers to go over any known areas, too, obviously?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. I just wanted to quickly say thank you to our new CFO, Kevin. We did just have a meeting on different funding that we can do with our accounts, not only funding those accounts, but making sure that all of the different accounts are F D I insured, making sure that we don't have too much in one account and too little in another, separating it all, but really looking at some strong interest rates now, and looking at really bringing in some nice interest rate for the city, which would be a big, big plus. I do want to say, oh, also, we had a resolution that was on the consent agenda, I just want to highlight, that was $400,000 from the American Rescue Plan, that'll be put into our roads program, so that'll be really nice, and also, I want to again thank Bee and her father, of course, and also, congratulations to Aaron. So with that, we'll open it up to public comment.
Honorable Mayor, Council, good evening. My name's David Tucker, I'm the President of the Government Workers Union, and my address is 18 South Second Street, Hamilton, New Jersey, 08037. I'm here tonight to speak to you briefly about our contracts with the upper management and middle management employees. It's always a pleasure to, to deal with Mike and Lou. It's not always a pleasure to hear no all the time, but they're very pleasant when they tell us no. And we work through a lot of things, this is our second contract with each of these groups. The first contract, we really got all the boilerplate and all the, the normal stuff down, the second contracts are really just revising certain things. We began, which is why I'm here tonight, we began the upper management contract in January of 2021, and we're still not done in '23. We were substantially finished in July of 2021, but we ran into an issue, I'm sure you'll remember the issue of the vehicle usage, the personal vehicle usage of an employee. When we ran into that singular issue, it really sidelined the rest of our negotiations, which, which weren't very much. I bring this to your attention because in addition to being the President of the Union, I've sat on many county and municipal committees in Atlanta County, and I still sit on some other boards, including a medical center. And sometimes people bring something to our attention, to the board, and we say, where did that come from? And we find out it was on the back burner somewhere, and it'll, before the next meeting, we give it a little attention and direction, and it's quickly resolved. I'd like to bring to your attention the matter of the upper management contract, which is two years expired now. When we ran into differences of opinion in July of 2021, I did file a charge against the municipality for labor law violations and bad faith bargaining. We let that progress, and we talked about it many times, but we weren't able to resolve our differences. In December, December 15th of 2022, the state found merit to our charge and issued a complaint against Cape May for that violation. Your council and I asked the state not to process that matter and let us talk about it a little more, because our differences are so minuscule that we'd like a chance to resolve it rather than spend the time and money with state intervention. Since then, there's been four meetings, January 13th, 25th, February 7th, and 23rd, and there's been no movement from the municipality. I missed, I was traveling on work obligations in another country on the 23rd, and I got a memo from the state saying that council from the municipality advised them they had no position to offer for the municipality to try to move us a little closer. So that's why I thought I would take a little time. My wife and I spend a lot of time here in the summer, overeating and spending too much money in your very nice mall, and it's always a good excuse to come down, so I thought I would come down and just bring to your attention that we have very minor differences which are holding up what amounts to two contracts. And I respectfully request that the council maybe give us a little attention and direction so that we can, you know, finish these up and move on. I don't think they're blockbuster issues to address. I gave you a copy of what I'm talking about, just because sometimes when unions show up and speak, people think we're exaggerating for effect, but I just wanted to show you we truly do have some litigation issues pending, which I'm very confident that we can just, in a good afternoon conversation, resolve our differences. If you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to ask.
Mr. Tucker, if I may, you look very dapper tonight, thank you for coming, but.
Trying to learn.
I want to tell the council, I've been openly negotiating and waiting on you a lot, when's your guy, Mr. Tucker, going to come back and talk? I want to get this contract settled. Yes is stopped last year, because I'm not going to authorize any vehicle to travel to another county with an employee where the city council's paying for gas and tolls, so if that's the issue, it's not going to happen. All employees that have a city car, if they live within 10 miles, the ones that are authorized take it home, they can take it home, but I'm not paying to send a vehicle to Atlanta County for an employee that works for the city.
So this is.
Paying tolls or gas, that's apparently what he thinks is holding it up. The last conversation and meeting we had, I thought was good, and I thought we had everything settled.
Yes.
So, and sorry to interrupt you, Mike, but this type of discussion is precisely in this form of government, while council looks to have individuals like yourself, by the way, thank you for driving down here.
No problem.
But you know that in this form of government, negotiations go through the city manager and labor council, and I, Mike Watson always picks up the phone, or will call you back, or give you a time to call you back, so.
He does.
And, and he does, so, and that's our labor council, so I would strongly encourage you to continue going through our labor council, and the city is always prepared and has demonstrated a willingness to negotiate in good faith. I think we just got done a number of contracts since 2021 to kind of clear the backlog, so there was a backlog, and we've been working through that, but I think that call and this type of discussion in this form of government is really one that would be best had between labor council. So I thank you for coming down and making the comment and expressing your concerns, but that's where I see the conversation right now.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I didn't really want to have a dialogue on it, I just wanted to, to let you know where we stand, you have very professional employees here, we have 33 municipal bargaining units, and some of them, it's very contentious all the time, that's not the case in Cape May. You have great professionals who love the community and love the job, and they're a pleasure to represent, but again, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I think we have very minor issues, and again, not to talk about negotiations, but Michael and I have had several meetings of the mind, and then when, you know, we sit down with council, it, we're told we have to wait a little longer, so I'd, I'd be willing to meet anytime, Mike, and your labor council, Mike, is a very nice guy, anytime you guys want to meet, we'd like to just get it done. So thank you very much for hearing me, and good luck with your endeavors. You do have a very special community here. We, when I, when my kids were little, we used to go to Ocean City all the time. Now the kids are grown, we have adult time here in Cape May, eating and walking around, and, and congratulations on a wonderful environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Mrs. Leo, come on up.
Just say you all now, I'm very nervous to come up here. I think my fa, your father had my father in Chris Taven as a doctor, is that your father, a doctor?
Doctor Schwartz.
Yes. And Lou Belasco and I.
I call him Dad.
Well, his grandfather was Bernie McCracken. My first husband died of melanoma in 83, and he was the head football coach, girls' softball and that, and I distinctly remember even myself, I went to this high school, and I graduated from Lower Cape May the last six months. So I'm very familiar with Cape May, born in Mayville, I'm a real native. John Summers, Nathaniel Holmes, they're great grandparents, so my family, they're all buried here, and I'm going to be buried here. And what's going on now on my little street of Cape Hart Lane? I, I, you know, everything's over money now. I shared with Lou, I could go into Tenenbaum's store, daddy would say, go get your prom gown and tell him I'll be in to pay it, and that was a way of life here. Vince Cassell, you know him, he's newer, but he, you know, it was a way of life. Now everything is over money, and can I make my house bigger? Can I do this? Can I do that? Well, that's happened to me back on my little street. My neighbors, Gail and Joe Stevenson, are a blessing to me. My second husband died two years ago, the 25th, 5th of February. I lost my little dog, the 25th of October, because there was no drain back on my street. Now Lou and Zach have assured me there's going to be a drain, the water becomes stagnant, people were pumping water out from their basements onto the streets. That is probably some of your sewer problems, because I know another person that they stop, but there's a person in my neighborhood that does pump it directly to the drain. But I don't want to turn anybody in. I love my neighbors, these people, Mrs. Notch and Bobby, I've known them since I've been a teenager, and they're here to help support me, along with Anita that's on, and Colleen, Anita's on, has that beautiful house, that old house, and she's worried, on Congress Street. You need to keep the neighborhood the best you can, not, can't be all over turning a three-bedroom house into a seven-bedroom house and looking for how you can get away with it. To move these houses back to two feet from the street, which I was at the meeting, and it was brought up to make it a street, that little, those lots. They said, had no address. That house started paying taxes in 2016 as 231 Cape Hart. They went to the post office, they came back and told council, the post office says it needs to be made a street, we can't give it an address without it being a street. Well, it has an address, but the city has given it, with two lots, not, and they're calling it Cape Hart Lane. Now I find out that that's how those two houses were able to come all the way back within two feet. Now what happened? Nobody seems to find it all. This is my son-in-law, Dr. Tenner, he and I were at the meeting with a resolution, and I asked him to come tonight to verify, and then they had a vote afterwards, council, and it was voted that it would become a street. Now what happened? I don't know. How, how, how does that happen? Now, we're suffering the consequences. Joe and Gail, myself, I don't know what I'd do without them, but we've got trucks, and I know, I've asked Mike, Shane has been back there to see it, I would like, Zach has, Lou has, I'd like any of you to go back there and see what they've done. Heaven help us if we have a fire. I'm in Wawa, and the firemen, I give them all donuts. The city people are the most unappreciated people in this town. People complain, and the visitor, everybody complains. I didn't do it this year, but I have for years. I buy the police donuts, the M U A donuts, the firemen donuts, I even go to the city hall sometimes, and I, I love them. I love this town and I love the people, but what in the world is happening? I, I knew Madeline's father, he grew up the same time, I mean, in the summer, Clarky's Restaurant, they're on the corner, hot dogs and that, and so what has happened? People have moved in, they don't know the history, they don't really know the town, and then they, they fall in love with it, but then they decide, oh, but I miss where I came from, oh, I think we should have this, or we should do this, or. Oh, I think we should have this, or we should do this," or, and they're not realizing, they're driving people out. They've all moved out. They can't, they can't handle it. So you are here to represent us, the people that are at least what's left, you know. I don't know what you're going to do about my little street. It is so dangerous. You think, you know, how are you going to get a fire truck through there? Barney Dougherty looked it up for me. He has, in Saw Needles, there's an old map from the very early nineteen hundreds. That street, my street, went all the way through to North Street. How that, shut that down, I don't know. I can tell you this much, I don't know, am I allowed to say that? Eddie Holman had the shop where the, I call it the hotel. Fifteen people stayed at that in the summertime, three cars stacked. You know what that's like, huh? The Warners, oh, there's no parking. They're running all over everything, trying to park, I've had them park in my driveway, kidding. I said, "You can't park there." He says, "Well, I'll give you five dollars if I can park there." He was working for Congress Hall. I mean, this is the stuff, and I'm not exaggerating, am I? Sometimes there's fifteen, twenty-five cars turning around in this little, what is it, fourteen-foot wide street? What is anybody thinking? I would like to see the street go all the way back to where it is on the original map.
Yes.
Yeah. And come in off of Congress and go out on the north. That would eliminate all that congestion at CVS. And you would go out onto Perry Street where it's not so congested, going out there, one way, one way in and one way out. And instead of all this, now, I bought, John, who's live, we bought the six lots in front of the bamboo, and who brought up about the bamboo? I'm all for it. The people up front and the double red house, I pay my lawn guy to mow, the creek runs right along my fence, then five feet the other side of that is the house, the red house up front, which it connects to that bamboo. I pay people to come and cut the bamboo. I pay for them to mow my grass. I cleared that whole street with a push mower years ago. The city does mow that because that's street, that's Claghorn extended. And that was because there were all these little garages. Now they got abandoned. The city put it up for a bid. We had choice because it was our next in line, and John and I bought that. I've paid the taxes on it, and we've paid the taxes. We maintain our property. I pay for my part where that bamboo, when you first come back from there, seventeen feet out, or where the, all the little garages, and when I was a kid, I remember them, and they tore them down. And back where Mr. Bryan has, there was all these little, and they got, they just went up for taxes, but it never went up for public auction. I don't know what happened. So the city could figure out what that happened, but I'm not attacking anybody. I'm just asking, please, help me. Help my neighborhood, really. I love this town, please help us. And something has to be done because the firemen in Wawa, the boys say, I say, "Oh, I live on Cape Hart Lane, you know where I am?" "Oh, yeah, we know where you are," because it's so dangerous. Heaven help us. And that hotel or that house that puts fifteen people in, huh? John was on oxygen, he never left the house for three years. I've taken care of him, and it already, my first husband, and those, those people, I'd have to constantly go back and say, "You can't park there," because I said, "If I have a crisis, they got to get in here and take care of us." And then they wouldn't move, and then call the police. I should let Joe talk because it's a lot, it's city lots. It's not a street, so the police can't even ticket them. I would like Joe to say something, but that's what's taking place.
Thank you, Mrs. Leo.
Help me.
So, first off, I think everyone up here agrees. When she asked the audience if anyone would say no, I was hoping, I was going to see if anyone would actually say no to your question to the audience, but I think everyone up here wants to help you. I'm glad you didn't get into our history when I was a child, because I-
I, I known Zach since he's probably about six years old. Wonderful family, his mother's a Christian, Bible studies together, the whole nine.
Thank you. But we did talk about this a little bit with, with the city manager, with the solicitor. You understand, one of the problems that, of course, we have is something happened in the history that was a mistake or whatever it was.
I can only tell you that Jeff could attest to it.
Right.
It happened.
Right.
It was voted on, it was a resolution. We came back, am I right, Jeff? And it was voted on by council. So I don't know what happened, and I'm not-
And I think we found some minutes, actually.
I'm not, well, it was more than that. So something got lost.
Can I just address, try and address that, Mrs. Leo? And I hear the concern about, there definitely was an easement that the city gave to just a particular set of lot owners in that area in recognition of what you just, what you said about the history. It used to be a throughway, right?
Oh, yeah.
And-
I was there as a child, I could describe it as a child. Eddie Holman said, "John, Vic Benson wants to buy Eddie Holman's shop," which is where the hotel is. He said, "Please don't say anything because Vic won't buy it unless we can shut the street down." Good old John.
So, and that was way before I was even in the picture, but-
United benefit a kid.
But, so anyway, we ended up, we ended up with these privately owned lots. You know, the ones that are along North Street are privately owned. You know, that came to be through tax sales or whatever history led to that. But then we were left with this city lot, which is the L-one at the end, and then that goes into an actual right-of-way, which is Cape Hart Lane, which is what, thirty feet long? And then it goes to Claghorn. But it looks like Cape Hart, but it's not. It's a city-owned lot with only-
But that was voted on.
So that, and getting to that, whether it was dedicated as a right-of-way or private, if I'm, if I'm an owner in the area, I might think about leaving that alone because making it a public right-of-way, it kind of makes it more accessible to the public than would be now.
Not if you live where I live.
Well, and I'm, I'm just talking about the legal aspect, not the practical, how people rent houses and have people park, but I'm looking at how can we help congestion in an area that's already pretty tight? And I-
Let me tell you the congestion.
And, and Mrs. Leo, I can tell you, I personally, you know, walked down there after my run to go check it out, and I can see the construction, I see what's going on, and I see how tight that is back there.
And they come in, they have no way of getting out.
Right.
So now they're, I had to replace my skirt to my driveway because so many turns around. We leave, we live behind cones because, and then they get down the other end, or they go in Joe's, I want Joe to tell you how serious, it's serious.
And I believe anything that comes out of Mr. Stevenson's mouth, but-
Yes, and you should, he's a good man.
He is. But I, a couple of, and want to give him an opportunity to speak too, but I do want to say a couple of things that, from my perspective, we do have no parking back there. I think that, well, that's on the books, I think that's enforceable.
But-
And also, I'm just, I'm providing the menu of options here, okay? That's, and I was looking at this anew, wasn't part of the history, and council members came to me concerned about this, and what can we do to address it? So I'm looking at what's in the code book now, and then what are some things that maybe we can do to reduce congestion in the future? And that was one of the zoning amendments that I went over with council earlier about whether it's a publicly owned lot or a street, doesn't matter. If it's publicly owned or a street, then that setback's going to apply, and that would, that's to give-
There's six inches from the street. You saw that, didn't you?
And, and that type of amendment is geared at, let's avoid those kind of situations and provide some, some breathing room for the neighborhood and for the town. So that's where that amendment was coming from that we talked about earlier. So they are looking at ways to, you know, kind of, it's a unique area for sure, and I live on a street that's almost like that, which is, you know, you're tight.
You need to preserve it.
Sure.
And, and you know, I'm sure the Briants want to develop, and that's their property. But that street that went all the way out to North Street, just envision that you come down Congress and you want to get back where we are, you come on, you go on Cape Hart, you go around, and you go out to north. I just explained again about the MUA, or my, the CVS, and all the congestion there at, and even at the traffic light. The soccerator boy years ago got killed there. They go, they come down Perry Street like it's a, it's a, it's amazing. In front of CVS, there's so much confusion there. You need to sit there and watch what goes on in the summertime. It's, to try to get out even.
Mrs. Leo, can I just give council one update too? Because I did go down the street with the city manager. The puddle that, that Mrs. Leo referenced, it's always there, and it's, the street is just, whatever they did in the past, it lingers there, there's nowhere for the water to go. I just want to clear this up. Mrs. Leo called that the sewer, it's not the sewer, it's the storm drain.
Storm drain. I beg your pardon, I don't know the difference.
Just to be clear for everybody, so the storm drain, what it needs is a drain where it puddles, and then we had our engineer take a look at it. He thought the only thing that they would have to do is install a storm drain, get underneath, they had to go underneath the road to connect it into the rest of the storm drain system.
But they do pump into the sewer too. I know someone that does directly. They know it's illegal.
Okay. So, so we have that, and it's actually budgeted for, in the twenty-three budget, for Fall Twenty-three Project. So that, that's, that's in the yet-to-be-approved-by-council budget, but it's in the budget now. And then I think the legal question, and again, this does not solve the issue. The issue has occurred, but I do think making sure that doesn't happen again, where you have someone six inches off of a street, is our duty as council to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
The boards, these boards that they had to go through, I don't know whether it's real estate or who, but they all knew that they were lots, that they hadn't been turned into a street. And they sold those houses. The house that's directly back from me, he bought Diane Hutchinson's house, and then he bought this.
Can I go on?
Go ahead.
I'd like to continue with what the mayor was saying. In regards to this puddle, we're speaking with the city managers, we're hoping that we're going to have enough money to add a turnaround just after where that puddle is, right before your houses where the garages used to sit.
Where would you have the turnaround? Shane, and he's been very patient with me.
Do you remember, when we discussed it, we were at your street, it would turn around before they even got to your house?
But, but you don't have enough room. Oh, no, you didn't discuss that with me. No, you told me, when I talked to you the last time on the phone, you said, "Well, where our idea will make, they won't even come back to where your house is." You never explained what.
Well, to have the turnaround and even more signage than we already have. We already have it's a dead end, but some people don't listen to that.
No.
Probably have, need another sign that says, "Local traffic only, no turnaround." You know, we need more signage.
Take out that island, I'll be nothing but a skateboard park back there. And Mr. Warren didn't even want it either. You have no idea. It's all it is.
We're definitely not in favor of that.
It's a skateboard park.
Well, let's, let's have this conversation. Mrs. Leo, we want to help. I mean, we can't correct what's happened, okay?
Is there any way you can make that street? Ask the Briants about opening the street back up? They want to develop back there.
We probably have to purchase that property.
It's, it's, they, it's privately owned. The rest of those, I'll call them French fry lots that lead to North, North Street are privately owned.
And I remember as a kid growing up in that same neighborhood, I used to be able to walk right through there to North Ave.
We all were, but Conrad shut it down.
Right.
When Vic Benson bought that. He knew that if John had carried on, because we all remembered as children, kids, teenagers, that was open, that was a street. And like I said, it's on the map, old maps.
And if I could, if I had my way, and we didn't have this easement agreement from 1990 from the city council that promised access to three of those properties back there through the city right-of-way, am I correct by saying that? If it was up to me, I'd put a guardrail around that entire area so nobody could park or continue to go through there, because if we create more, two more driveways, which is allowed in that areas, it's going to continue to exacerbate the problem. But unfortunately, this agreement was created in 1990, so it's, part of our, part of our hands are tied, you know.
I'm going to stop because I would like Anita to make comment, and I would like Joe, and maybe Bobby or someone else.
Anyone who would, but just know that we-
Because they'll have input too.
Right.
I've told you what's going on back there.
Thank you, Mrs. Leo.
Thank you.
Anyone who would like to make a comment, please feel free. Just know that we hear you loud and clear, and anything, yeah, absolutely.
Joseph Stevenson, 233 Cape Hart Lane. I just want to preface my statement by saying that, you know, none of you folks here at the tables had anything to do with this. It's not, you didn't create this problem. It was a while ago. And conversely, I appreciate everything every one of you are doing, mayor and council, city manager, deputy and or solicitor. The personal interest you've taken in it is really appreciated. My point was just that, you know, there is a bit of a danger issue too as well, in that, you know, the street's only fourteen feet wide, it has that switchback or serpentine course in there that has very jagged edges, and almost on a daily, once a week, I'll run my rear tire over it. Delivery trucks don't want to come down because of that zigzag. And our recycling trucks and our trash trucks have to back in from Congress all the way down Claghorn and down the street. And, you know, there are children at play in that street, so obviously it could be a problem when big vehicles are backing down a street. Regarding that the parking and the turnaround, it's constantly someone sitting right in front of that park, no parking sign, but I understand the police have a problem because it's not a street. And, you know, the parking state statutes, you know, are all on streets. You know, public, quasi-public, generally you're required to have an agent or the owner of that property, like private property, sign the ticket, and, you know, it complicates things. Again, that may go back to the issue that Ruth was talking about, is having that street as a dedicated-
Mr. Stevenson, can I ask the solicitor just on that, is there an issue with writing tickets there?
It's, it's, it's just another step. From my perspective, if the city has signs down there saying, "No parking" in, in that lot, which is not a street, that's the law of that lot, and any, I mean, the city manager could sign that ticket saying, you know, you're basically using property, you know, trespassing on the property by parking a vehicle there.
Okay.
People, people have the right for ingress and egress, but not to park a truck or park a vehicle or use it as their auxiliary, like parking lot.
Is this, is the signage adequate right now?
Oh, I appreciate the city put the signage up. It is perfectly adequate.
It is.
It's just an enforcement issue because it's complicated in that it's not a street.
So, Mr. Solicitor, could you, would you be able to go over this with the police chief just to make sure that everyone's clear on where it stands?
And we could easily codify that too, to make that clear, notwithstanding the fact that this is not a street, this is a city lot where no parking is permitted, and that's the, that's the ticket.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and again, I'm just-
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to get that clear.
Yes, I appreciate that, Mayor. But the other problem is that it's a two-way street, that, you know, we come out of our driveways, the people come out of behind North Street, and then we have people coming in from Congress Street. With that little Z pattern in the street and the fourteen-foot wide street, it really is a problem. So, I mean, I know that you, you folks are all working on it, and if anything you can do to try to alleviate it would be greatly appreciated. So poor Ruth, she loses sleep over it at night. And, and again, you know, we appreciate everything you folks are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Anita Novino, 351 Congress Street. I'm kind of amazed that all of what took place back there has happened. And I don't want to condemn anyone in particular, but it's actually hard to believe. It's hard to believe that in 2016, 17, 18, all of what went on back there took place, and then the follow-up to it was that there's overcrowding, and I understand that people had properties back there because it was already discussed how they got them, but it would seem to me that there should have been some moderation used, and it wasn't. And to have the street the way it is, it's an extreme safety hazard. And no one here wants to be responsible for that, we know. Because all the people in this room are good people, and we don't want to see anything happen to anybody who lives on that street. Now I understand the Briants own all that property, and so they have a right to build houses on that property. I'm hoping that all of you can come up with some alternatives, if not a street. I'm hoping that all of you can come up with some alternatives, if not a street, now. But I would like to see something happen in terms of a street when the Bryants decide that they're gonna build houses there. If they're gonna put, put two houses there, there's no reason in the world why there can't be a street that goes out there and to the left.
I just, so you're clear, you're proposing exactly where the street?
You could see it, you could see it, the property, if you look at the property lots, you can see exactly where the old street used to go. From the L shape of the end of Cape Hart Lane continues and then makes left on...
On to North Street?
Towards North Street.
Okay.
I believe that you're proposing lots 48, 50, and 51?
I'm not familiar with the lot numbers, honestly.
Yeah.
Right, the, the old area there that was...
Sort of reflected on the tax map, you can see it.
I'm looking at the tax map.
Well, she wasn't.
It's diff, it's difficult for people who have been here a long time because of the fact that there was so much charm. Not so much. Still the best place to be. I'll be buried in the backyard.
Get a, get a license for that first, Anita. No, thank you, Anita. I, I think what we're gonna probably end up doing here is maybe have two council members that wanna work on this, work with the city manager, see what solutions we can actually come up with. I can, I just wanna say right now to everybody, it's gonna be difficult to purchase property and those kinds of things, okay? So that will be difficult. But everything else that the city can do, if it's talking about trying to limit who can go back there legally and things like that, I think that's something council would entertain. But it's gonna be hard to do that tonight, obviously, so...
Mrs. Leo, we're gonna have to plug you in if you wanna keep going. Because you, every, the public's gonna miss all the good stuff you're saying, so...
Okay. All right, so what we're gonna do is, I have two volunteers up here. Councilwoman McDade and, and Baldwin.
You know what? We're all committed to this. That's, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Each of us will take the opportunity to speak with the city manager and the city solicitor.
Yep.
And you know, if there's an opportunity that we could possibly make some kind of purchases or whatever, maybe we'll have a closed session and talk about it. You know, what are, what are the methods we could do that?
Yeah, I think we need to do some homework, take a look at it, talk to the city solicitor, and then in a closed session, lay everything out on the table to see what options are viable, both in the short term and long term. I mean, just to, to make sure that we're very clear on, you know, what our bandwidth would be.
And in the short term, the city solicitor has already drafted an ordinance putting those setbacks in place, ready to go at the next meeting.
Okay, that's good.
And you're going to also follow up with the chief to codify this, this issue of ticket writing as, you know, based on...
That was number two on my list for next meeting is making sure that that's a no parking area regardless of the dedication.
Mr. Matthews?
Good evening. 1440 Texas Avenue. I'm not gonna belabor this whole thing, but I've, I've worked with Ruth for a couple of weeks, probably two months. I grew up with Ruth, and as you see, she's very emotional. And she calls me at night, 8 o'clock. I have a dial tone now when she calls. Jeff has a dial tone. He knows it's his mother-in-law, so I got the same dial tone. And, and I think Joe said it best. You people are not responsible for this. It goes back, I don't know how far it goes back, but probably three or four council seats. I'd say it'd be 12 years or longer. And, and I know, I know what happened, but I'm not gonna bring it up. And I think some of you people are smart enough to probably know what happened, why that road was closed and so forth and so on. My question is, Lot 40 and 4001, are them lots owned by the city?
Deputy City Manager Lewis.
Yeah. 40 and 40.01. Was it 44, Joe?
Yes.
And 4401? Okay. So we looked on the tax map and are they city-owned lots?
4401 is owned by the county MUA. The other one I'm not seeing on this map I currently have in front of me, just...
44 and 4401. I thought it was 40, but...
But this is where we should break off. Mr. Matthews, just while, while he's looking that up, was there anything, anything else you wanted to add?
No, I'm, you, you said you got some volunteers, you're gonna look into it because Ruth's gonna have a nervous breakdown, believe me. I mean, she's, it's, and I'm sure you'll...
We'll follow up.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else, public comment?
Stacey Shan, a different topic. I just wanted to confirm that the budget will be presented to council at the next meeting?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Yes, we're working on it. And as you know, we have a new CFO, so we're trying to get through a lot of things. And then, as you've been here, paid on council, we can put the books together and think we're over the whole budget. Yes, that's, that's the plan, the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll just, just to finish that up, we, council hears you. I think we have at least, I know two volunteers that'll work, present to all of council. Anyone who wants to get involved, obviously, yeah. Yeah, good. And, and certainly make, make some decisions based on those recommendations. So with that motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Time is 6:50.